I want to welcome everybody to the November 30th, nine o'clock, special meeting on universal trash collection. With that, if everybody's standing for the invocation, Commissioner Kitchen, would you give access today?
Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful, crisp, cool morning. Thank you for another day to be able to take a breath, to stand up here, conduct the business of our community. We thank you for all those that have taken the time to be here today to share their thoughts and opinions with us. We ask that you would guide and direct us in all that we had to do this morning, and all to your glory, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Everybody face the flag.
Aye.
Let the leaders see the flag of the United States of America, and this is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
This is a special meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 30th day of November 2021. In attendance are Chairman Scott Carnahan, First Vice Chairman Ronald D. Kitchen Jr., Second Vice Chairman Ruthie Schabach, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Litt.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, again, I want to thank everybody for being here today. This is the November 30th, nine o'clock, special meeting on universal trash collection, and with that, I will turn it over to our Administrator, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, I just have a couple of comments to make before Mr. Olney presents the bids that we received.
Shh, sir. Sir. Thank you.
We have taken the steps that the board's directed. At the last meeting regarding this topic, you directed us to receive bids and the districts, and how we were going to receive those bids. Those bids are going to be presented today. The one comment I would like to make is that the state legislature changed the law relating to universal collection. When this originally started, the law was that you had to provide three years' notice or 15 months of lost revenue gross, meaning that you had to give them three years' advance notice, and then you didn't owe them anything. Or your other option was you could pay them 15 months of lost revenue and do it immediately. They changed that law, which, from a practical standpoint, precludes any, economically precludes any county or other jurisdiction to go to universal collection. The law reads now, three years' notice and pay 18 months of gross revenue. So you would have to do both. You'd have to give them three years' notice, and you'd have to pay them 18 months gross revenue. That will make it economically unaffordable through the county's lobbyists. We were able to make it so that the current procurement that's underway is exempt from this new law. It was specifically carved out. I believe there was one other jurisdiction that was in a similar situation. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr.
Randy, real quick, how long has this been going on here in the county? So, you know, I've seen some emails come across that we're doing things behind the scenes. I just want to make the public aware of, this has been going on for some time. It just wasn't done behind the scenes.
Yes, Mr. Olney's got the total chronology and the sheet in the slideshow presentation.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and all the commissioners. Should be. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So this morning, we'll be discussing universal collection. At the prior meeting we had on this, we were directed to go out and get bids, so we'd have a call so the board could make an informed decision. So with that, I would be-
And when was that prior meeting, real quick, do you know?
I have a slide on it. It was, I believe, in April of this past year.
I just wanted to be the public to be aware.
So for this presentation, it'll be a schedule update. It would be an outline of what the disposal cost would be should we go to universal collection, and also the collection options and costs that we have from the bid that the board could slug from if they choose to move in that direction. So for the schedule, so in January of 18, January 8th of 2019, that's when the board decided to set a public hearing, I believe on March 11th of 2019, to have public input and to set the three-year clock that is required by state law.
And that was done in a public meeting, in a board meeting, correct?
It was done in a public meeting, and in between that time, we sent the official notices out to the haulers.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kitchen.
That was the, that was when we first, according to this, that's when we said we want to go ahead and start down this road. There was many workshops prior to that time where we debated whether we wanted to even go down this road. I know at one of the board planning sessions, we talked about whether the commissioners were in favor of moving forward with this. So we, we didn't even start in 2019 down this road until previous workshops, we had discussed that. Is that correct?
I remember 2015, or, yeah, 2015, we started discussing.
Speaking of workshops, after the board set the official three-year clock, the first workshop after that was in June of 2019. The second workshop after that was January of 2020, and then followed by another board meeting to get the approval to start preparing the ITB. That was in February of 2020.
Hold on, Randy. Commissioner Schabach.
Yes, ma'am.
Why did we choose to do the ITB rather than RFP? If you could just explain that so that people understand that.
So the ITB is an invitation to bid, and my understanding was the board wanted to make a decision based on price instead of either proposal or qualifications.
That was just a question that came up, and I wanted people to know that. Thank you.
And moving forward, we had staff did their work to prepare the ITB, prepared the different zones for collection per board direction of how they wanted the county split up. We then presented that bid document to the board in May of 2021. Once we got your approval to move forward to get costs, we issued the invitation to bid in July of 2021. Initially, the bids were due in August of 2021, but we got so many questions from the haulers, we actually extended that twice and got bids in in September. After that, we evaluated them and then prepared for this meeting of where we're at to present the findings we got from the bids for the board's consideration. Would also note, the end of the three-year notice, per my understanding, is on March 11th of 2022. Should the board elect to move forward with residential universal collection, that would go into effect on October 1 of 2022. So moving forward, should the board choose to move forward with universal collection, we'd have to account for the disposal cost in that as well, which is not what the haulers had to bid on. Currently, our disposal is funded by the $27 MSBU, which generates about $1.8 million a year. And then it's also generated from the tipping fees, so that's people as they go across the scale at the landfill. That's the money they pay to dispose of their garbage and the annual pass that we have. And currently, that generates about $4.5 million a year. So to address that, since it would now be paid for on the tax bill, the disposal cost, the MSBU would be raised to $65 annually from $27. And our consultant prepared that for us, but we did an internal gut check. On average, most households create about 1.1 tons of trash a year. At our current tipping fee for the haulers of 30 a year, that's, sorry, 30 per ton, that's $33, plus the $27 gets you up to 60. With inflation and costs going up, that 65 is within reason. I would also note that we still would have some tipping fees, and should the board choose to also keep the annual holly pass, we'd get some fees for that, and we would estimate that would still generate about $1.4 million a year. And with this increased MSBU, we'd still be able to maintain all existing services currently covered with that MSBU.
Okay, real quick, and I know that by going down the road, we wanted to eliminate the traffic at the landfill because it's, you know, that's a huge issue there. So by doing so, you know, you got in here that we're going to still, you know, have tipping fees and annual, going across the scale. You know, part of the reason we're going down this road is to eliminate the traffic going in our landfill. So, you know, once we move on forward, I think this board needs to have a discussion also of having drop-off sites, but anyway.
Remember, if you do go to universal collection, the, there will be some people that we can't collect unless they opt in.
And again, that's why-
And we're going to talk about that. For example, Terravista Black Down, any area like that, they can opt in if they want to, but they have the right, the way that this is done right now, to continue to handle that themselves. There are also going to be some people in rural areas that are on private dirt roads.
Right, that's why, that's why I bring up-
I think Commissioner Kennard, Commissioner Kennard's well aware of one road that drives out during the summer, which my guess is, is the hauler would not agree to go down that road. But it would be an opt-in process, which Randy will discuss a little bit, with the consent of the hauler.
Well, again, that's why I'm just, you know, putting it out there that, you know, one of the reasons is to cut the traffic at the landfill. So we need to discuss whether we have drop-off centers to eliminate that at the landfill. Okay.
So now it was for the collection costs. So the county, per prior board direction, is broken up into four quadrants. The board selected that divide to be State Road 44 for north-south and County Road 491 for east-west to divide it into the four quadrants. We estimated the number of houses per quadrant. I say estimate because right now home building is going on. So hopefully, those numbers will actually continue to increase, and then from there, we would have a collection cost. So the quadrants that were directed to create by the board direction was Area 1, which is also the northwest quadrant, Area 2, which is the northeast quadrant, Area 3, which is the southwest, and Area 4, which is the southeast quadrant. With the estimated households on county-maintained roads are also shown in those boxes and are kind of further divided, shown on the next graph, with those on county-maintained roads and those that are just total general housing units in those areas. Some of them could be on private roads, some of those could be on city roads as well. And then there is several different options the board can choose from as far as how the bid was created. However, we kind of just chose the main three, and if the board wants to dive deeper, we are prepared to do that. So the first of the main three would be for weekly garbage, weekly recycling pickup and weekly yard waste pickup. The highlighted green there was the low bid for, if they bid county-wide, as well as the bid for each of the four quadrants. And then below that, where it says services, what's highlighted in blue shows what the service would be, weekly recycling, weekly trash, weekly yard waste, and then two bulk pickups a year. Based on that, the total bid price for the low bid was 13, about 13.9 million, in which if that was awarded to that low-bid hauler, the hauler would have to provide a annual performance bond for 100% of that amount. So if, should they default, the county would still have an option to go to a different hauler at that point in time. The total cost per house, that's with the collection, as well as the $65 disposal and property appraiser and tax collector fees, would be $344.48 per house. If you pay your taxes within the statutory discount period, which is a 4% discount, then the cost would be $330.70 per house.
Sure, any questions at this point?
The next option is with weekly garbage pickup, but recycling every other week or bi-weekly, and then yard waste collection every other week. Again, the low bid is the highlighted in green for both a county-wide bid as well as broken up per quadrant. The services, it's highlighted in blue for what it is, for recycling bi-weekly, yard waste bi-weekly, residential weekly, and two bulk pickups. That total bid price is around 12.3 million. Again, if the board were to award that, the hauler would have to provide a performance bond in that total amount. With the $65 MSBU, as well as the additional fees, the total cost per house would be $313.46. And again, if you pay your taxes early and get the statutory discount, it's $300.92 a year.
Commissioner Schabach.
Mr. Olney, my understanding with the ITB is we have to pick the low bidder, correct?
Unless there is a reason not to.
Oh, okay.
This board can choose whatever option they want to go with.
Okay. I just, I, that's what I understood, the difference between the ITB and the RFP. So, but you're saying we don't necessarily have to-
I, I, Madam Attorney, tell me if I'm wrong, but this board could choose to go to a different hauler at a higher price. Is that correct?
If, if the board makes legislative findings as to why they want to differ from the low bidder, then it is acceptable.
Thank you.
It's within the bid documents to allow for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Olney.
All right. And then the last of the kind of main three, where we're looking at just weekly garbage collection. Again, the low bid is highlighted in the green. The services would be weekly garbage collection and two bulk pickups a year. That total bid price would be about 9.6 million. The hauler would have to provide a performance bond of 100% of that amount. With the $65 MSBU and the additional fees, the total cost per house would be $259.20. If you pay your taxes early and get the statutory discount, it'd be $248.84.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
All right. Commissioners.
I had a question for Mr. Olney that I already know the answer to, but I'm going to air it so everybody can hear it. So if we were to go with a weekly garbage only, we could theoretically, it would be up to the haulers. The haulers could then, whoever, if we go through with this, could actually do separate contracts. So for example, right now, I have garbage pickup and then yard waste and recycling. So whoever the hauler ends up being could still sell recycling and yard waste pickup if there was enough business for them to do so.
Yeah, my understanding would be the trash pickup alone would be on the county contract and that would be covered. And should the resident choose to contract that hauler for recycling pickup, that would be on the individual property owner, should they choose to do that.
Okay. Commissioner?
I just have a couple of questions, and then we can decide where we want to go. You know, I'm trying to go back to the original matrix we laid out. You know, we, I think we all had five or six, three or four, or five or seven boxes, you know, that we wanted checked. One of them, you know, and it seems to me the more carve-outs you do, for whatever reason, the more those boxes become unchecked. One of them was eliminating truck traffic on the roads. So if we do, you know, you could have this person for this, and this person for this, and this person for this, then that unchecks that box, right? I mean, the concept of having a franchised hauler was that you were going to have one on the street. The other one was, and we haven't spent a whole lot of time on this, is what, what the deal is with recycling, what we think the future is going to be with recycling. My understanding now is not really anything is getting recycled. You know, my understanding is it's all gone to the landfill. I mean, so-
Metals is the exception.
Right, okay. So, so anyway, the thought was, is that, well, that may change. So the first thing that occurs to me is why are we going to be paying a separate fee for something that's not being done separately? Okay? And I know that's changed because three or four or five years ago, when we started this, you know. And it has been going on for a while, Mr. I'll say this, is that this has been talked about. At one time, the county had an actual referendum on the ballot years ago, and the majority of the citizens said they wanted this on the ballot. Then in 2018, when I ran for reelection, I was asked directly if I supported it, and I said, yes, if it, if it, if it checks all those boxes. And what we had talked about, that was what I put forward. So I said, I will support it. I said that during the election. So people knew very well what my position on universal collection was, but it was based on doing all those things. You know, one was to eliminate, and we can go back down through it, but, you know, that's what I'm measuring all this against, Mr. Chairman, is what about the illegal dumping? So if you end up with 30% of the population that's not using universal recycling, then how does that? It's, in my mind, the majority of the people that will use this are the people that are not doing the illegal dumping. You know, so we're not, we're not, you know, unless we come up with some kind of plan that's going to address that, even with the drop-off centers. The concept to me was, if you get an old mattress picked up or an old couch picked up in front of your house for free, why would you go through the effort of loading it on the back of your truck and kicking it off the side of the road? Okay? But if they're not going to get that, if they're going to have to take it to a drop-off center or whatever, then you eliminate that, that motivation to say, just put it out front and the county will pick it up. So I guess, this is good because we wanted to know the price, and that was the other big box. If it's going to cost people more, okay, then, that was a huge box. So if it fixed all the issues, but it was going to cost twice as much, that would be another issue. So I think the reason that we're having this as a separate meeting today is we really have to wade through all these. What do you do to make sure that, you know, if we're going, if we're going to go to this effort and do it, that's what we spent all this time, was to gather this information. So it seems that we have the numbers in front of us, and I do have one thing related to the contract. It's a five-year contract, but when this was done in Crystal River, I know we made a, made a point of saying, if we are unhappy with the person that we select, or the company we select, at the city, or in this case, the county's sole discretion, you could go to the next bidder. Okay? Do we have that provision in this? Is that what we told these folks?
We have performance criteria in the contract, so if they don't meet that performance criteria, then we could go to a different hauler. That's also the point of having the performance bond, is so we have that bond that we can pull from and then go to a different hauler at that point in time.
And the bond gives you the money to be able to make the switch.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that's important to understand because, you know, people's, you know, and it's interesting, Mr. Chair, I'm sure all the board has gotten the same emails, you know. Some people say, we love our hauler, don't change. Other people say, don't change because we hate the hauler. You know, so we're getting all, all sides of this. I think what it comes down to is that, you know, to do this, we have to make sure that it's going to, to meet all the criteria that we've, we've set out. So I just wanted to be clear about that because I would hate to think that, you know, that we, if, if we go down this road and we get sold something, and I'll just leave it at this, right now, if somebody calls and says, I want to complain about my trash service, I say, sorry, nothing we can do about it. We don't, we don't deal with trash. It's not under our authority. So from an elected position, it's, you know, there's nothing you can do about it, but it's easy to pass the buck. If we go with this, we are going to be the ones that are answering those calls. We are going to be the ones responsible, and if that happens, I just want to know what our recourse is. I don't want to be able to say, you know, sorry, we're stuck with this for a year, or five, or even six months until the bugs get worked out. If we're, if we do this and we give the selected hauler a year to get ready, there shouldn't be a whole lot of bugs to work out. So I just want to know that, as we spent years and years going over this, that if we're to this point now, and I think we decided, Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason this is, I'm sorry, am I interrupting you?
I would appreciate if the public would keep their comments to themselves. I would give you your time to come to the podium and make those, but please, please, please give us our time.
So, so the, the, we, well, again, anyway, that was good. I lost my train of thought, so well done out there. Thank you.
All right. Well, I've got to say that I feel like I have given this issue the appropriate amount of time and consideration that it deserves because it is a big one. It would be to, to implement something, something like this in the county would be, would be a major turn of events in terms of how we handle solid waste in the county. If we don't do something like this, if we don't pass something today, then due to the recent legislation, it's likely gone forever. And so I have, I have given tremendous consideration to the pros and cons of implementing something like this countywide. And I know it's going to disappoint some folks, but I've, I have decided that I am not on board with implementing universal trash collection. I'll tell you why.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give you your time, but if you keep up, I'm going to start escorting you out, okay? I, I know that you're happy to hear that, but listen, please give us our time to talk, and I will give you your time, and you can express your concerns there. So I would appreciate if everybody would keep quiet until I turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
I was, thank you, sir. I was disappointed that, that one particular hauler was locked out because of a requirement that they be, that they bid the entire servicing, the entire county, which I may be wrong, but I believe just from my recollection was that we wanted it, we wanted the county bid in quadrants and, you know, split by 44 and 491 bidding those, those quarters, and that there was, there was never an intention to pick one hauler for the entire county. I mean, I may have that wrong, but, but I, I was disappointed that one particular hauler was unable to even participate in the bid process because they couldn't bid the whole county. Each time we've had this discussion, as Commissioner Kitchen was talking about, you know, we've had these boxes that needed to be checked, that I'm on board if we can do this, 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 if it, if it addresses all these things. I've had three things that I said it must check off, or I'm a no, and I've been on record for saying that. This discussion, I believe largely started or grew out of the airspace considerations that we have at the landfill, that we only have a limited amount of airspace left. We've now moved into, you know, designing or hiring an engineer, so we've started the process to, to dig a new cell or build a new cell out at the landfill. So it temporarily addresses our airspace. But when I look at our surrounding counties, their airspace is in the 80, 90 years, that type of thing. We're still, even with our new cell, I think we're probably still looking at 35 years, 40 years, maybe at the most.
So the current Phase 1 through 3, that is estimated to go to 2030 when we finally finish designing and build Phase 4. That will give us another 15 to 20 years beyond that.
Okay. So we're, even, even with this new cell, we're still looking at 28 years at, at the most? So it hasn't solved our airspace issue. We still haven't addressed that. We've got a litter problem. It doesn't address our litter problem. I don't believe that the majority of the litter coming out of vehicles is from people taking their trash to the landfill. I think the majority of it is blowing out of the back of trailers, pickup trucks, and people just unbelievably chucking stuff out the window. I've seen it, I've seen it twice, sitting at a red light. I don't know what crosses somebody's mind to think that's okay. But it doesn't solve, the second box I had was the litter. The third box I had was illegal dumping. I don't know how many code, code cases we've had over the past year or two with illegal dumping. I just don't know how big of a problem that is in our county. Individuals illegal dumping. Or is it businesses that are illegal dumping? You know, when, when a tire store, for instance, goes out and dumps all their old tires out in the woods, I don't think it's going to stop that. So those are my, those are my three issues, three boxes that I said needed to be checked. I don't believe that, that the bids that we received checked any of those, much less- Uh, I don't believe that, that the, uh, the bids that we received checked any of those, much less all three of those. For, and for that reason, um, I'm going to not support.
Commissioner Davis?
Here's why, uh, I want to give a little background on this, um, because I know it sounds like most people in here are not in favor of it. I take this very, very seriously and I spent a good, basically spent my Thanksgiving weekend on a deep dive into trash and looked at how the other sixty-six counties in the state handle solid waste, whether they do universal trash or not. And that's not to say if you, you know, what does everybody else do? Well, that's right for us. That's not to say that at all, but it is a data point. And I, I do believe in trust but verify. And what the staff has told us, um, I believe it came from staff, was that in general, as a county grows and becomes, um, evolves, it typically goes to universal collection. And I will say that this timing stinks. Between COVID and us doing stormwater this year and everything else, the timing is just hideous. But we're on this three-year clock and it is a do or die kind of situation. So I am going to take it very, very seriously. The, uh, it does reduce road traffic regardless if you have additional services because, for example, I may have nine trucks coming down my road with three different haulers, times three different services. If you just have one hauler, then it would be at most three trucks. In speaking to my family who lives on a very tight neighborhood, um, my father said, you know, it's, it's really a problem on, on, whenever there's a trash truck on our road, it's a real problem. And they have multiple haulers come down that, that little road. Our road maintenance is not being, uh, is not on the correct turn cycle. So any more damage that we do for roads is not good. I do think it would be better for illegal dumping and for litter on the roads. I do think it will help that. It'll make it more efficient at the dump. And as Commissioner Kennard say, it's, this is gone forever unless we do it now. So that's why I'm taking it very seriously. Now, in terms of the deep dive I did in, in, um, some of the other counties, they have some, there's some good exemptions for these things that we can certainly look at. But it was a really interesting split. I ran, I have a spreadsheet that I created for the sixty-six other counties. And I, um, sorted it by population density, so area, landmass and population combined. I did it for population and I did it for essentially economic, um, status or, uh, household income. All of the counties that were above Citrus, meaning that's where we're going. We have probably the Turnpike Extension clipping us, we have Suncoast coming through. Our county is rapidly changing, really, really rapidly changing. And it does kind of scare my, uh, scare myself a little bit on that. So we have to make the right decisions for the future. And all of the counties that are above us, eighty-one percent of them have universal trash. So trust but verify. I got that news from staff and I did a deep dive and sure enough, those that are, have higher population, higher density and higher economic factors have all gone to universal trash. That's what you do as you evolve as a community. But the devil is in the details. And I don't think we have the details ironed out to make this, um, palatable, at least not today. I do think that we should look at doing this as a baby steps kind of thing, at least to make sure that we get something in place and then it can evolve as it goes along. Because to Commissioner Kennard's point, um, some of the unimproved road areas will not be able to qualify for service. But, you know, we get requests all the time to pave private roads through an MSBU. So as the county grows, we'll have fewer and fewer sand roads. And, um, things will catch up.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and, I'm, I'm going to jump in. I'll go ahead, Commissioner, you want me to go first or you want to go?
Um, I'll let you sit.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and ju- uh, jump out here. Uh, first and foremost, uh, I want everybody to understand the Chronicle's not right. Their editorial yesterday was totally trash, okay? Uh, it says sixty-six percent, or sixty-six counties out of sixty-seven were universal. Commissioner Davis just proved to you that, uh, that is not true. Okay? So don't let the paper scare you. And, and what's interesting, they wrote an article about me and my fellow commissioner, Jeff Bryan, that, uh, that we don't listen. Well, let me tell you this, everybody he wrote that I didn't meet with, I meet with, okay? So we do listen. We do understand this subject, okay? So it, it's kind of funny, uh, the majority, the emails that we, we got, that the people didn't want this. But the Chronicle told you, don't listen to them, do it anyway. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here to listen to you, okay? I have had a plan, I, I, uh, since, since we started this, and it's what Marion County does, okay? Marion County has a free enterprise, okay? They have, they have two systems there. They have a system where they put the tipping fee on your tax bill, okay? But they have drop-off centers, uh, if you want to haul your own trash, they have drop-off centers around the county that you can go to that drop-off center and drop off your trash. Uh, it doesn't cost you anything as long as you're a county resident. I believe that's the system that Citrus County needs to go to. I always believed that, okay? And I, and I will continue to push that. Uh, when government starts telling free enterprise what to do, it's a problem. We see that every day, what, coming out of Washington DC, okay? Uh, it, it's your choice. Uh, when you look at the price, you know, my mom's on a fixed income. And when you look at the price, I know what she pays, this is more money, okay? And I'm not so sure the service is going to be better, uh, if not worse. I'm not, I, I can't say that. But again, I, I'm for free enterprise. I think you should be able to choose who you want. But I do agree that we need to put a system in place, and it's the same system that Marion County has in there. And if you want to go a step further, uh, I think that, uh, what, you, you put those drop-off centers around, you bid those out to let the private industry run them. And last but not least, that cuts the, that cuts the traffic out of the landfill. And that is a huge issue when it comes to liability, okay? We need to stop that. And last but not least, and some people probably won't like this, then I think you need to take bids on private industry running your landfill. You want to save money and put it back in the taxpayers', uh, pocket, that's the way to do it. I, I, I wrestled with this all night long. I've looked at a lot of different, uh, scenarios, okay? But as a, as a conservative Republican that was elected to do this job and to save taxpayers' money, that, 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 that's the way, that's the way I feel it needs to be done. I feel that you need to have the choice to make your decision. I feel that we should go with the Marion County model, put drop-off centers around. That, that takes care of your private roads, okay? It takes care of your people that want to haul. It takes the people out of the landfill. We can still put a drop-off, uh, on the other side of the landfill, but it takes all that traffic out of landfill, it takes the liability out of landfill, and it checks the boxes. Okay? You're still going to keep it economically, uh, if you want someone to pick your trash up, then you can have that. If you want recyclable, you can have that, but you're going to pay for those services. You won't pay for the tipping fee, but you'll pay for, if you want to self-haul and put it in your trunk, then you can just go to the drop-off center, just like Marion County. They're very well-run. Uh, you know, other counties have them, okay? Uh, in the South, Tennessee, you can go to Georgia, they, they, they have them, okay? And then you, then you hire retirees that still want to work a couple of days a week, part-time, to, uh, to maintain them or, or to look after them. But again, I think it needs to be, uh, bid out to private haulers to run these, uh, drop-off centers. And then again, I think this board needs to take a look at, uh, when this, if this happens, that, uh, we, we, we look at bidding our landfill out to and have it privately run. So that's where I am as a, uh, as your city chairman today. I won't be after one o'clock, but, uh, that's, that's where I am. And I, but again, I, I want to go back to, it was very disturbing to read what the Chronicle wrote about how sixty-six counties are universal. That is just a total lie. So don't believe what they write because it's not true. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, how many counties have universal? Did you say? I missed that number.
Eighty-one percent.
Um, no, 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 you're misquoting me. Sorry, hang on. Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three of the sixty-seven have universal. But if you look at the sort, the sort on where we are, like we're, on this one is, uh, median household income sort. We're right in the middle. Green above, it's very green above, but green meaning yes, they do it, red meaning no, they don't. And so eighty-one percent of all the counties above the line.
Okay.
Above us. And all of those, eighty-one percent. Essentially of the twenty-three counties that do not do, not counting us, twenty-three counties that do not do universal, virtually all of them are more rural than we are.
Thank you. And, um, I just want to say to y'all that some of the board of this, people on this board have been dealing with this since two thousand and fifteen, and they are very well-versed in what it is. And some of the emails I found to be a little disturbing and not quite the right information. Commissioner Davis and I have had the privilege of only dealing with this for one year and it's been a lot of big issues we've been dealing with. So I appreciate the knowledge that the gentlemen up here have regarding garbage and they've touched on points that I didn't think that they would bring up, and they did, that are concerning to me. But, uh, this discussion has been going on since, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-five and I know in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand, this discussion was going on. So this has been a long time talked, you know, been talked about. Also want to note that all of you here, I appreciate it, but if you live on a private road or a private development, you know, this doesn't really apply to you, so you might want to think about that before you come up here and yelling at me. One of the big boxes that I had that Commissioner Kitchen brought up was, and I have said, that if this does not save the citizens' money, then this isn't going to be something I'm going to support. And I ran the numbers and just at Beverly Hills, um, it's a hundred and thirty-dollar increase. And I cannot support that for that reason. Mostly, I did have some, a few questions, but I can talk to staff about that because it sounds like the way the board is going, that I, I could do this privately. But, um, but the first main concern for me, when this ITB started, was that Beverly Hills Waste did not have the opportunity, or Beverly Hills wasn't carved out to do this, and we see that it will be more expensive. And I understand that, and they could have done other things to maybe just bid Beverly Hills and do their thing and then maybe bid the rest of the county higher, and they could have still won Beverly Hills, perhaps. But that didn't happen, so that is, was a concern. And then, um, I said that if the numbers and the data didn't show a savings, and they, I, just in the one area I found that they didn't, that I couldn't support this. I am concerned though about, this would be another cost to the citizens, and obviously, everybody else has brought that up, so I'm thankful for that. And, um, while this concept is good, and I do believe we need citizens to have a disposable plan of what they're going to do with their waste, because you can't, you know, we have to figure something out with all the traffic going to the, to the dump. But, um, I, I came to, and I, I appreciate what Commissioner Carnehan said, that we need drop-off sites, we need curbside drop-offs. That will help tremendously with us and with the traffic and, um, but I'm always going to support free enterprise. So for those reasons, I cannot support this today.
Okay.
Um, I have something else.
Okay. Hold on. Go ahead, can we, Mr. Davis?
I also am concerned that a thirty-year-old company was not able to bid based on the way we did the bid documents. It is easier for me personally to vote against this because, you know, if the county's not in charge of trash, then I don't know, I can just pass the buck, as somebody said, one of my fellow commissioners did. I am trying very hard to make the right decisions for myself, at least, one of five. Vote my conscience on what I think is right for the county long-term, looking downstream. And the funny thing is, is because I knew this would come up, well, if you're a true Republican, you wouldn't be for this. So I ran the political spread on, uh, universal trash in Florida, and the funny thing is, is that it's actually kind of inconclusive. So, um, it's, free enterprise is, um, you know, we're not privatized, I mean, we're not bringing garbage underneath the county. We are not running the business. We are actually doing a contract, much like we do with road resurfacing or anything else. We're putting it out for bid and handling it for the good of the community. You can imagine if all of you had to try to get your roads repaved, some of you might have to, based on our performance level lately, but, um, put together a bid to have your road paved yourself. So that's all this is. It is, um, definitely still keeping private haulers, um, in business. And one of my checkboxes, since we're talking about checkboxes, is that I wanted more than one hauler and I wanted to be sure the little guys didn't get squished. And, um, I've had a lot of email in support of the, the new little guy, which is Flash Trash, and certainly the old little guy, which is Beverly Hills Waste.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, let's, let's go back. Commissioner Kennard is absolutely right. This all started, when I, when I first was elected in, uh, twenty-fourteen, I walked into my office and there was two huge books laying on my desk, and that was the study for the landfill. And that's, that's what got this all going. Uh, I believe we paid, the county at that time had paid like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something for these studies. And, and that's where, when people say, well, why are you charging twenty-seven dollars tip fee? Why are you charting out, talking about sixty-five? Well, that's where this comes from, is what these studies that determine that. So that's what started this discussion going. And, and I am in agreement with many of my colleagues up here today. Commissioner Davis, I, uh, agree with totally, when this is free enterprise, that's what bids are. If we just said we're shutting everybody down in the county and the county's going to do a, a governmental trash pickup, then sure, then you're shutting it down. But when you encourage businesses to compete against each other and bid, then that's free enterprise. So the argument that universal trash, the way we proposed it, is somehow anti-free enterprise, I, I don't agree with because if the, if the most competitive person, uh, wins, that's what free enterprise is about. But with all that said, let me, let me come back and just say this, Mr. Chair. As far as I'm concerned, this debate came down to three groups of people, and the Chronicle is not one of them. So I totally agree with you. If, if you believe anything that's in the Chronicle, it should be on the comic page. I mean, that's where, you know, I find most of the, the, the really good stuff that you can read. But, um, let me take that back. The reporters do a pretty good job, the editorial people, they have no clue. They have no clue. So I'll, I'll phrase that by saying reporters are fine, the editorial board needs to get out of the, the room. But, so here's, here's the three groups. And the only reason I reference that is that they left that one group of people. So we have the group that's yes, do this. We have the group that's no, don't do this. And, you know, I think particularly, they took a swing at me by saying, well, what about when you meet with all the homeowners groups? You know, you're listening to them, you know, that's a special. And I said, no, I don't. The difference is, is when I go and meet with the homeowners groups, they look at me and say, what do you think? We pay you to gather the information, uh, to make these kind of decisions and come back and explain to us why you did. And so when I discussed this with the groups that I meet with, their response was, uh, we trust you. We know you've done the research. So if we don't have a hard feeling yes or no, and some of them do, uh, we're going to go along and support you in what you decide. And that's, that's a great position to be because that's, to me, is the way the system's supposed to work. So with that said, now, everybody on each side has good points. The yes side has great points, the no side has a great points. But whatever you think best, I'm going to go with. And what I think best is that we started this down the road and we were very clear from the very beginning where we wanted to end up. And I'm not satisfied we've ended up there. And I'm just not satisfied that, that we haven't checked the airspace box, we haven't checked the illegal dumping box. And by that, I mean that I can be assured that if we make this big change, all these issues go away. And the big one has been recycling. The main reason we started this, another main reason, was the recycling. We want, we, we said the citizens in Citrus County want to recycle and not enough are, and we need to make it convenient for them. And it, we haven't checked that one. So, um, you know, I, I, and again, I know it's not kicking the can down the road because I do think Mr. Oliver is right. It, it's not, you can't ever do this again. It's just that if you did this again, you're going to have to take fifteen months of grocery receipts and pay it. And that's going to be, and that's, excuse me, eighteen. And that's going to be, and that can be rolled into the price of the pickup. So just like Mr. Olney gave us all these prices, the one at the bottom would be plus eighteen months of grocery receipts for all the haulers. And that's what every citizen would have to pay. So you're not closing the door, but again, I, I agree with Commissioner Davis. You know, there's going to be a point in time when, um, you're going to have to look down the road and say, why aren't we doing this? Why didn't we do this? And I can tell you this, folks, during this whole time, this seven years that I've been involved in this discussion, we've gone from commissioners being all on board to not on board, to some on board, to maybe yes, maybe no, or whatever. But the, but the, it's always been related to what do we think the end product's going to be? And so because of that, uh, ba- and again, staff has done a great job. I mean, look at the analysis. Look, you know, we sat up here how many times and say, these are great discussions, but until we know what it's going to cost, what do we do? And, uh, and again, Commissioner Slaboff hit it right there. It's kind of, you know, she nailed it. One hundred and thirty dollars more per this group of people, that's hard dollars. So are we getting a bang for the buck? Are those people getting a hundred and thirty dollars worth of services? Are those people getting $130 worth of services? So, Mr. Chair, I would just have to say, it disappoints me greatly, because I think universal is the way to go, I always have. But based on the way the numbers fall out, and based on our restrictions, that we're really only going to get to like 70, 77% of, of units on maintained county roads, that still leaves a big portion of people that, that aren't going to be done. So I, I, and I know, again, I appreciate today what I was going to say earlier, is this is a special meeting, we're supposed to vote today or not vote today, and this will be the end of it for us, okay? So again, I take that seriously as well, I always have. I'm taking it seriously that we're going to put this to bed, one way or the other, when, when we leave here today. I hope we do go down the road that you're talking about, for what Marion County does, because we do have to, we might not be able to, to click all the boxes, but if we can start picking away at some of them, and, and I think, you know, the drop-off centers might be a good start, if we can do that. But eventually, we're going to get there. Whether it's here or now, but that, down the road, I'm, I'm sure Citrus County is going to be universal at some point in time, and the only thing it is, it's going to cost us more in the future than it is now, but, you know, some people say, I'm not going to be here in the future, I care about what I'm paying now, not what I'm going to be paying 50 years from now. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Slaboff?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, there, this is to all the lovely emails and to the audience, that even though I do read them, and I do get frustrated, and some I appreciate, I don't always agree with these other four colleagues of mine. And sometimes I get pretty upset with them.
Every meeting.
Mostly at Commissioner Kennard. But I, I just want to say to y'all that I didn't know how today was going to pan out. I actually thought it was probably going to go through, and I might be the one or two votes against it. But the fact that, listening to my four colleagues, and the homework that they've done, and the thought process they've gone through to save the citizens of Citrus County money, and to make sure that all the boxes are checked, it makes me proud to sit up here today, and I thank you for that.
Commissioner Davis?
I actually would very much like to look into improving what's put before us before we take a vote. That's what I would like to do. Marion, I actually did, because you said such wonderful things about Marion, I went over and toured Marion several months ago, and it was kind of interesting when I said something about, they said that they were working towards Universal Trash, and I looked at them, because they actually want to go to Universal Trash, and I looked at them, I go, are you one of the counties that's grandfathered in? And they actually didn't know that the law had changed, and their faces fell. They really believed that going to Universal Trash is a better way to go. So I think our staff has done an awful lot of work, I think the haulers have done a lot of work in responding to the ITB, but I do think that we need to get a few more of these boxes checked, and I, and I, I'm not willing to say right now that we can't do that, but between now and March, when the deadline is. Because I do think downstream, this is what we really need to do, and the timing is horrible. This should be several years from now that we look at this as a county. But mark my words, with those roads coming through, we are exploding. You, the number of rooftops that are going up right now is just crazy. And this is what we need long-term as a county, we just don't need it right now. But the problem is, is that it's going to be super expensive to do it any time in the future. So understand, and I really appreciate Commissioner Slaboff's words on that, I, I took this very much to heart, and I particularly am very concerned about her district with Beverly Hills, with five, you know, the story of five little old ladies that share one trash contract because they only produce one little Publix bag of trash a week. That's heartbreaking. So I think we can figure out, not heartbreaking that, you know, heartbreaking to think of adding to their budget, that's not okay. There are exemptions that can be done, I don't think that this is what we need to go with right this second, but I do think if we delay this vote and put the staff to work on some very substantive direction, I think that we could get there between now and March.
Well, Commissioners, I don't know about you, but I plan on taking a vote today, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'm, I make a move that, make a motion that we...
You may want to take public input.
I'm going to make a motion, and see if I get a second, and then I'll come to public input. Like, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion that we do not accept, that we do not move forward with Universal Trash.
Second.
We got a motion, got a second, and the podium is open, so please come forward and you've, and, and give us your thoughts. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dr. Paul John Reinhardt, I'm currently a candidate for the Florida House District 34, currently held by Dr. Mizzoulo. And, you know, it's interesting, this topic, because it seems like yesterday, I, I lived in Beverly Hills since, for 41 years, we had our house built there, and I remember standing with my dad in the old Beverly Hills mall, talking to Jim Fowler, when he worked for Waste Management, we bought a roll of stickers, and it only cost like a couple of bucks for each sticker, and you'd put it on the bag, and my family didn't make much trash, so we chose Mr. Fowler's company at the time. And it seemed like a very good idea, and I became a Republican because I do not like government intrusion into my affairs, okay? And I'm for competition, and I feel that competition should be in the hands of the consumer, okay? We actually have states that I'm looking at strongly, that let you not only pick your garbage hauler, but they also let you pick your electric company, okay? And that's a very good idea. I, I totally believe that in a conservative area, it should be in the hands of the consumer to decide, and this type of universal pickup takes it out of the consumer, you know, it takes it to the ballot box. And not all of you run at the same time, so I feel that this should not be approved.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome, thanks for being here. How are you, sir?
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you all?
Good to see you today.
Good to see you guys. My name is Leland Ship, I live in Floral City, and I know y'all know I stand for conservatism, and I appreciate the hard work y'all have done on this, and the decision y'all have come to. I think that, just to let you know, talking to a lot of citizens, different citizens that have moved here from other counties in the state, a lot of them stress that they left because of the increase in taxes due to universal tax, their garbage collection, that they left their county because of how high it kept climbing every year. So I appreciate what y'all have done here, and I think you've made a wise choice. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sabrina Watson, La Canto, Florida. Obviously, my speech is about to change dramatically as well. And I want to give you guys kudos as well. We were talking earlier out in the lobby, I have a friend who lives in Michigan, and his taxes are $1,000 a month up there. So he can't even actually afford to leave his home any longer. I have a girlfriend who has moved to Beverly Hills, sold her home in Detroit for $15,000 because she couldn't get any more for it because of the taxes. And I can guarantee you, I've seen the pictures of her home, there's trash all over her neighborhood, and I'm sure they have everything that's involved with larger government, and bigger fees, and more taxes in Detroit. So I, I like what, what Commissioner Carnahan has to say about the Marion potential, and I just want to thank you guys for doing your homework on this. Thank you.
Next speaker. Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you. First of all, Commissioner Carnahan, I agree with what you, what you say, what it should be done, but the main crutch of it is...
I need your name, I need your name, please.
Oh, Bill Harris.
Thank you, sir.
And the other part is, is when a government starts implementing taxes and telling us how we need to spend our money, you're spending our money for us. And there's not one program that a government has implemented where they force it upon the people through taxation that they ever retract. So when you say it's only going to be X number of dollars per this year, how much is it going to be next year? There's no such thing as any government being honest with spending money on people's dollar. I mean, that's what you're seeing right now, we were lied to by an administration right now. Have you seen the price of fuel? You seen the price of everything? This is for our good, is what we're being told. Now, is this, we want Citrus County to continue pushing through, is mandate a tax for us? I mean, we've got, what, over $5 million in uncollected permit fines for the building, zoning violations? Nothing's been done of that. Look at all the violations that are going on just in that end of it, and there's nothing being done on the county. So, you know, I think forcing us to, at gunpoint basically, that say you're going to tax us for trash pickup, you know, first of all, there's a difference between free enterprise and free market. I choose free market. Free enterprise doesn't exist when a government chooses it for you. There's, there's nothing free. Freedom doesn't come with taxation. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
I passed out...
I need your name?
Yes, I passed this out already.
I need your name?
But I just want to mention that if, nothing else...
Sir, I need your name.
Louis Carliner.
Thank you, Louis.
And you, and you should have my letter to the editor copy in hand. We perhaps maybe need a separate system for dealing with the solid waste, the old mattresses, the appliances and stuff like that, which even, even if we have a car wrap for Beverly Hills, which should be possibly done, at least a separate system that would provide them support for dealing with the solid waste. And one of the things I've added in handwriting on the back was perhaps a special tax on vacant properties, is it certainly would be a benefit to these investors and owners out of state, because they no longer would have to get phone calls on having to try to arrange to get the stuff picked up from their properties. Then this solid waste, you know, company would then be able to note where particular properties are having a problem with the illegal dumpings, and then the sheriffs then could put in a hidden cameras to maybe get the information, and perhaps apprehend the people who are doing on a repeat basis. But the primary thing I said is, if you really want to know what it's like living in a city with a state-of-the-art, this trash disposal system, just go spend a week in Cape Coral. Waste Pro is the people that are doing it, and they do a superb job. And however you do it in the end, this is the type of system we would, everybody, I think, would love to be able to have, with the costs being done, so that nobody is adversely impacted by it.
Thank you.
Can you do a week, arrange a week in Cape Coral, present us, I'd like that.
My name is Billy Casey, I live in Citrus Springs, and I like my garbage haulers. Christmas time, they do a good job, I give them a little Christmas present. They, I like the haulers now, because I have a project, I have two beforeers left over, a little bit, they take the time, they pick it up, no problem. One garbage can, and I got one with debris in it, they take it away. One thing I find interesting today is the, somebody mentioned lobbyists. Now lobbyists, they, I'm sure they're the one pushing this over and over and over. This has got to be put to bed today, and I would appreciate your vote on today, and let's get it over with, we got, we got other things to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Welcome, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Suzie Metcalf, I live in Floral City, and I was previously the county's solid waste management director. However, today, I'm representing Keep Citrus County Beautiful. I've been a member and an officer in that organization since inception 20 years ago. And our mission is to encourage personal responsibility for community appearance through education, activities, and, and recognitions. We focus on promoting recycling, reducing litter, and beautifying our neighborhoods, waterways, and public spaces. The recycling and litter prevention aspects inform our position on the topic of universal waste collection. We encourage you to make recycling conveniently accessible for all residents of Citrus County. By making recycling collection available, along with the concerted effort at educating residents prior to implementing the program, the recycling rate will be greatly increased, and the contamination of the recycling stream will be reduced. Thus, you'll have marketable commodities, and recyclable materials will not have to be landfilled. That in turn will extend the life of the disposal facility. Recyclable materials make up a large volume with the residential waste stream. Speaking from personal experience, the volume of garbage that must be land, that must be landfilled, is actually less than the amount of recyclable material generated by a household. Therefore, we recommend that recycling collection be made available on a weekly basis, along with garbage collection. We also recommend including the biweekly yard waste collection and two bulk pickups per year in the package, which will cover the needs of most residents, and reduce the number of self-hauler trips as well. And it will, that will also reduce illegal dumping, because a lot of illegal dumping is the bulky waste. It's the position of Keep Citrus County Beautiful that the time for universal solid waste collection has come. There are advantages to a program that provides easily accessible collection for all residents. The amount of illegal dumping will be reduced, roadside litter due to unsecured loads will be reduced. Collection by a single hauler will reduce duplication of traffic on residential roads, and we all know that's a problem right now. Collection at all residences is much more efficient for the hauler, which reduces the cost per household. The number of self-hauling trips at the landfill will be reduced, and that improves safety, efficiency, and liability at the landfill facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Whedon, I live in Inverness, Florida, and I have been speaking against this since Jim Fowler tried to push it through, and I do mean push it through. And I commend you without a doubt, Mr. Carnahan, because you put it forth to do something now, rather than he tabled it, waited for everybody to leave, I stayed behind with several others, said, don't leave, because he tabled it for later and didn't say for how long. And sure enough, he came right back and tried to devote it through with nobody here. But then we spoke up, because we knew that's what he was doing. I live on one of those roads that they don't come down. So if I have to put my garbage, at which, by the way, I am my garbage pickup, I put my garbage in my vehicle and I take it to the dump all the time. I'm also on one of those roads that they used to dump on. I don't have the dumping problem like I did have. I don't know for sure why, but see, we got more dumping when this stuff started coming up. More garbage was ending up back by my place, back in the woods, back in the woods where y'all don't go. And I'm not the only one back there. Now, they do bring all their stuff out to the end of the road, and they'll come and pick that up at the end of the road, sort of like what you're doing, which, what you're talking about. But I will say, I also used to have, my parents lived in Tennessee, and they had that isolated, the little dumping stations. That, at that time, that was in 1980, that was a problem. People would set them on fire, which we're not quite as rural, we are still rural, they won't do that back by me, I guarantee it. They won't set it on fire there. But this here, to raise the prices, as Ms. Davis said, this is not a good time for this. And once you stop and you create a monopoly, and that's what it'll be, because do you really think that any of these other garbage companies are going to stick around here? They're not going to stay around, it's not profitable, they're going to be gone. Then it's going to cost too much for them to come back. So you've just created a monopoly, and that is what our government is supposed to stop monopolies, not create them. So I say, vote against this, this is not the time to do it. Like you said, it does not check your boxes, and it will create, people will start dumping again, because they can't go to the dump, because that's what some people don't understand.
Thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Patrick Goodman, and I live in Sugar Mill Woods. Three points I'd like to bring up, the first point being the freedom of choice and free enterprise, which has already been addressed. The second point I'd like to bring up is that there's no provision, the way I understand the proposal is written, to opt out. It is, compels everyone to participate. I disagree with that. Thirdly, the fees would be applied on the tax bill. I own two pieces of property, one of which will never be built upon, it will never generate any trash whatsoever, but by the fees being attached to the tax... bill forces me to pay for garbage collection that will never take place. Keep in mind, too, those investors out there that have multiple lots in various portions of the county, they would be compelled to pay that fee as well, when again, no garbage collection taking place. One of the other concerns is that if someone disagrees with paying that garbage collection and not pay it, they may pay their taxes on the property, but they don't pay the garbage collection taxes, that opens an avenue for the county to put a lien on their property and take their property away from them over garbage collection that never took place, which I believe is very unequitable. I implore you to vote against universal garbage collection. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Teresa Harris and I live in Crystal Manor. And yes, we're in a rural area where we're at. It's getting bigger, as you old guys know. Y'all know about Crystal Manor. And yes, we have a lot of illegal dumping, but the neighborhood has come together and looking at all these people and saying, "Hey, they're taking cameras, they're taking pictures" and stopping it. And I know a lot of that is what you're trying to stop and I get it, but I commend you for what you're wanting to do. Scott, because it works. I'm from Arizona. We've been in Arizona for 18 years. Before that, I'm a Georgia resident. This is what's going on in Georgia. Arizona, think about, guys, it's very rural in Arizona. And we don't have litter. We don't have all that in the desert. Because one thing is, we have signs that says, "If you litter, you get a $1,000 fine." Trust me, it works. I'm from that state, but we do not have litter all over the road. I've never seen such until we moved here two years ago. People just, like she said, put it in their back of their pickup trucks, go down the road and it blows out or behind trailers. But nobody's being accountable for this and no one is, you know, turning these people in and getting a fine. They should get a fine. If you have the thing that says a $1,000 fine for any dumping or anything, even in these neighborhoods, it will stop. Trust me. I lived in a rural area of 36 acres and we're around a bunch of farmers and ranchers. We didn't have any of this. And we had, only thing we ever had was the illegals coming across the line and dumping like you see on the news. That's true. But in the areas of the cities and the areas, you didn't have any of this. And if you have dumping stations, like he was tanking, it works. And the solid waste, we have like people that will come around and pay them 10 bucks, 15, 20 bucks. They would come and pick up your scrap metal, anything you have. And it's still, it happens here too, because I've done it. That works. So I say vote no on this.
Welcome.
Good morning. Scott Harper. Just a few quick comments because I know my three minutes goes by pretty fast. Just for the gentleman, the assessment should only go on properties that have homes on them. The assessment probably won't go on vacant lots. As far as recycling, the single-stream recycling, we need to get rid of glass. Glass is a contaminant. If you look at Orange County, you have single-stream, it's over 30% contamination every single load. Go back to dual-stream, which a lot of counties are doing, when you have the guys picking it up off the side of the road, they actually sort through the material and you have a good clean product and it is all recyclable. The county is statutorily responsible for garbage. You made every single person at the landfill nervous with the comment of privatization. And government is more responsible than private in running a landfill. Marion County handles over 60% of their garbage. If you wanted to do the centers, I ask again, how are you going to pay for it? That's the question, is how are you going to pay for it? The solid waste assessment is going to go up if you make the centers. The centers in Hernando County cost 1.2 million a year to run and there's only two. So it really comes down to what products you want to take at the centers. If you go forward with any sort of ideas, you want to stick with 2-1-1, you want twice-a-week garbage, once-a-week yard waste, once-a-week recycling, because if you go biweekly, people never remember when their pickup is. They just don't. And then you throw a holiday in there, they'll have no clue. It happens. Trust me, I know. The one thing that I saw was that you wanted solid waste to do the customer service. All these big haulers have huge call centers. Why are you going to put the burden on a department that only has two or three people that is going to handle hundreds of phone calls? It makes no sense. They can't handle it. And as soon as they can't handle it, the emails and the phone calls are going to go to you. And then you're going to go back to the department and say, "Well, why can't you do that?" Well, I've got 200 phone calls today and I've only got two people answering the phone. I can't handle it. That's going to become a reality. So the customer service has got to be taken out of the responsibility of the department because they won't be able to handle it. Your current market for garbage is between $17 and $21 a month for pickup. That is a reality. The community stops for the rural areas, that works well. For the people that have the long, oh, man, I knew it was not long enough. I still got another half a page, but you're welcome. Any questions? I can be contacted and I will answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Jamie Sebold and my husband and I own Flash Trash. We live in Inverness and we started this passion project, is what we call it, because we had so much buildup on our own street. And the problem that we ran into was the red tape at the landfill. So there's a lot more that we would love to have done without investing a lot of money. We didn't necessarily want to go into the garbage business, but it was in front of us and we needed to make a difference in the street we lived on and in the little neighborhood where we reside. Now that we're in it, we're invested in it, we see there's just so many areas like recycling. We have, we have so many people in this community that want to recycle and we cannot pick up recycling because as a small hauler, we have no place to take recycling. We would love to recycle and help the community out. We have nowhere to take it. We can't take our recycling to the landfill because it's not designed for that. So it's designed for the residents in the community to take their recycling. Waste Pro can grab your recycling because they run that facility there. So that's kind of an issue that we see as a small hauler. And when I say small, I mean, we have exploded with growth, but we're still a very small hauler in the county. We're just trying to provide really good customer service, be there when we say we're going to be there. And he brought up a really good point. If we're going to do this and we're going to pick up your trash and recycling and your waste, we need to do it at one time. Because like you were saying, the roads are a big deal. You know, we are limited with what we can do at, you know, in a compactor truck. We also have a satellite truck that we run, but according to the landfill, we're not even supposed to do that. But we've got people on dirt roads, they're handicapped. You know, my dad had polio. I know what that's like. You can't take out your trash. So, you know, there's an emotional, you know, an emotional factor there for me is like, we really need to be able to service these people, even if they live out, maybe they, you know, that's all they can afford. So we need to be able to service that too. And we need to remove some of the red tape and maybe make some room at the landfill. You know, we hate going out in a satellite truck and having to transfer garbage from that truck to our compactor truck just to take it to the dump, you know? But we don't want to not service these areas because they will throw it out. They will leave it out in the woods. It's happened, that's why we started. And like I said, we didn't get into it because we wanted to become garbage people. We have other businesses that we could focus on. So, thank you though for taking that to consider.
Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hi. Where's the microphone? Help me.
There it is. Thank you. I'm Kathy Brenn and I represent myself and my husband. We live at 138 Daisy Street, Homosassa in Sugar Mill Woods. And we also are here on behalf of the Republican Freedom Caucus and we oppose universal trash pickup. We are very happy with our haulers that we have now. They do an excellent job. In Sugar Mill, we have a lot of yard trash because it's that type of a community and they do that very well. There's very little dumping. Most of the trash along the roads or whatever, residents do pick up and most of it comes from service people with lunch sacks or drinks or something like that. We appreciate your interest in this and your research of it, but we want to stand in opposition of this. We are really, this is a huge tax increase and not only in Beverly Hills, but in Sugar Mill, there are many people on fixed incomes and this really is over a $100 increase just for us personally. And we also have two pieces of property and we don't know if both of those will be taxed. One will never have trash on it. And there are other homeowners like that. And I did hear a comment about Black Diamond that they could opt out. This is a concern for me personally, that many of the things you passed recently with the storm assessment and new tax that has been passed already, that there, you know, two large communities in our county are exempt. Much of that money went for transportation, for new cars, for new employees, for additional pickup on roads, which is already being done. And I'm, this is just an open-door taxation. I realize what you're trying to do and I support the concept, but this is an open door for a huge expense, not only for this year, but for in all the years to come. And we do oppose it.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please. Welcome.
Howdy. My name's Rick Stockstill. I live in Citrus Springs. I'm a bird and I fly north for the summer. So when I'm not here for the few months, I don't feel it's right to have to be paying taxes during those times. Second of all, I am a union pipe fitter and union pipe fitters vote Democrat. I've never been a Democrat because I thought they were so stupid and communist. And I always, they always want the government to do everything. And I've always felt that the free enterprise system and private people do a better job, except you guys. Because where I fly to up north, a private company runs the landfill and they charge you $75 for every time you go there. And I can take my four or five containers of garbage and pay four or five bucks and get the same service, except when I go there, I have to wear an orange vest and a hard hat. So I don't go there. I'd rather pay a trash hauler 500 bucks to bring me a dumpster that I can fill up and let him do it. So kudos to you guys for your landfill and don't stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers? Any other speakers? One, once, twice? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion of it. Commissioners, any comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis.
I would say that, again, I feel like we have more work to do on this. Once that work is done, I might indeed vote no. I just don't feel like we have done the work to fully consider this yet. I do think certificate of occupancy would be required to have a trash bill. Some of the other exemptions that I saw listed on some of the other counties would certainly be of interest to me here and I would assume we would do that. Things like very low income, if your property is residential and commercial combined and you already have a commercial service there, that would be exempt access. So for example, sand roads, things like that. If a truck can't get down your road, then you would be exempt and ag, of course, would be exempt, anything that's larger acreage. Ms. Brenn, you, just to, I don't know where she went, but to clarify something on stormwater, in terms of the gated communities, we cannot access private roads behind gates. So that's why they would be automatically doing their own thing. They could opt into the county system. But to go back to stormwater, I believe it was only a 30% credit for their own engineered stormwater systems within that community. And everybody in the county is eligible for that if you have your own engineered stormwater. But I really don't want to go down that rabbit hole today.
Okay. Commissioner Conard.
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. Some things that I heard, you know, closing the landfill to self-haulers would make the operations at the landfill more efficient. We talked about that and this was, this was before, I'm sure it was before Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Schleba were up here with us. But I had asked at that time, if we stop all of this self-haul traffic to the landfill, how many, how much money are we going to save? How many positions will be eliminated by doing that? Because ultimately, that would be the idea, is to save some money. The answer was not one. We weren't removing one position. All that we were doing was stopping self-haulers from going there. We're still going to keep everybody and this is an attack on landfill staff, but so why stop it then? You know, maybe, maybe there is some liability there. I don't know that we've ever had an issue there. So I don't know that the liability question isn't just, isn't just a deflector that's thrown up there to stop the self-hauling to the landfill. You know, we're not going to stop littering. Regardless of what the outcome is, I don't believe we're going to stop littering. What I had hoped to see in a solution that was brought to us was, how are we going to pick it up? Somebody's got to get out there and pick this stuff up. I am fortunate, I'm blessed to be able to travel from one side of our county to the other side of the county, from the east to the west side every single day, at least once, sometimes more than once. And yes, most of the time, it's on Highway 44, but ultimately, I may make my way down these other roads. Our roads are covered up with trash and it's not getting picked up. I don't know how many different ways I could have said that this is critically important to me to get that done. Show me a way that this is going to clean up our roads and it didn't happen. We've been talking about this now. I think, I don't know if we talked about it in 16, right after I was put on the board in November of 16, but I know it came before us in 17 and we talked about it. And litter was my concern then. So while I appreciate Commissioner Davis's position on having more work to do, they've had four years to work on this and the message hasn't changed. How are we going to address the litter? How are we going to address the illegal dumping? So while I'm not necessarily crazy about supporting this motion, I am going to support it because I think there's been four years of going, "How are we going to fix the litter? How are we going to fix the litter? Make sure the solution addresses the litter." The solution doesn't address the litter. The, there was, there was a couple of comments about the dumping stations up in Marion County and that they work and this type of thing. And my question would be, and again, Commissioner Davis certainly did her homework on this, she went up there and Marion County's looking to get away from their dumping stations. So that tells me that that's not necessarily what our, what our final solution needs to be. So that, if they're looking to go down a different road from what they currently have, I would sure hate to see us invest the money for the infrastructure to build these things, ultimately to go, "You know what? We still didn't solve airspace problem. We still didn't solve the littering issue. We still didn't solve..." Maybe we address some of the illegal dumping. I'll give some ground on that one. At one point, I don't remember exactly which meeting it was. At one point, I don't remember exactly which meeting it was, but I remember us talking about having, having staff or administration, whoever, get together with these haulers, come to a solution. What we heard from the individual lady talking about that owns Flash Trash, is there are solutions that are out there. Let's talk to the people that are hauling the trash, and come to some of these, you know, a reasonable solution that gives people the ability to decide who's going to haul their trash, what level of service they're going to have, and how we can best get our roads cleaned up, and, you know, our wooded areas off limits, if you will, to people that are looking for someplace to get rid of their trash. So those are my comments on this.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, let me kind of dovetail on what Commissioner Kennard just said. Just so we're clear, we're speaking to the motion, and the motion was to vote today no on universal trash.
Correct.
So if you vote affirmative, that means you're against it.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes, I was going to clarify that.
Okay, so, so I come back to the same thing. We're all kind of saying the same thing, we all have the same concerns. I don't know how many times I've driven down the road, and I've seen the litter crew out picking up the trash, you know, especially I come down Stagecoach Road, places like that, and I'm thinking, "Great, okay, they're out there picking it up," or whatever, and the next morning I drive through, and you can see where a bag of trash was thrown at, and it's all up and down the road. So we did pick it up. We picked it up the day before. I remember seeing on 44, the litter crew, whole way out, picking up trash all the way down 44, and the next morning I came through, and I called Randy, and I said, "It looks like a garbage bomb went off out here." So the answer is, there probably is no answer to litter, because how long, how far do we have to go back to the Native American with the tear running down his cheek, right? How many years ago did we start with, "Only you can, you know, save America and not litter?" So it's just like the speed limit. You can put a sign up and say, "Don't speed, people will still speed." We can put a sign up and say, "Don't litter," and people still will. And short of having a 24-hour curb-to-curb road litter cleanup crew, or, you know, people out there, you know, shaming people or whatever to do it, because, you know, we've talked to the sheriff about writing littering fines, and he doesn't believe that's at the top of his mission list. So we might just have to say, "Commissioners," that there is nothing that we can do. I mean, we could go out and pick up litter ourselves, but that doesn't mean somebody behind us is not going to be throwing it out right behind us. So all the things we talked about were important, but there were three biggies that I heard from the community. That was price, it had to be the same price for the same or better service, or why change. Recycling was crucial. I'll pay the little bit more if I can recycle, but not if it's going to the landfill and littered, okay? So in the proposal before us today, it does a lot of those things, but unless we're willing to throw a lot more taxpayer money at these things to address these issues, I don't see how we get there from this point. And to Commissioner Davis's point, I believe that's where we're going. This will happen in the future, but if you look at the information, like with the Suncoast MCours, we saw that. Citrus County is the biggest small county. So we're right in the middle of all this, you know, we're dealing with all this stuff that's happening out there, and there's a lot of people have asked me, "Why don't you do waste to energy?" And the answer is, we're not big enough. We don't have, you know, if you want to live in Miami where there's a lot of waste, then that kind of thing makes sense, but we're not big enough for that. So if we want to be a small rural community, you can't have everything that the large urban communities have and not that that we want. So I'm just saying that, Mr. Chair, to circle all the way back around to say, we made a great effort, I think we went out there, but it's, I don't think it's anybody's fault, other than the fact, and unless we can have assurances from everybody that drives up and down the highway that they'll never throw another thing out along the roadway, there's no, no way to fix it, right? So we just have to keep doing what we're doing, keep intensifying the effort to encourage people to take care of where they live. And I'll close on this, I think I told you the day my wife thought I was crazy, well, she always thinks I'm crazy, but here's, this was a good example. We're pulling, we're on Kings Bay Drive, we're leaving Pete's Pier, and a car in front of us rolls down a window and proceeds to take a whole box of trash and throw it outside onto the ground in front of us. So I jump out of my car, and I go up and beat on the window. And she goes, "You know how stupid it is to do something like that?" I said, "Well, I'm sorry," and I beat on the window, and I rolled it down, and I said, "We live here. Don't do that where we live. Pick that up and take it home and throw it in your own yard." You know? So they picked it up and put it back in their car, but it just infuriated me to see that kind of behavior, because we take it personal, this is where we live. But guess what? They could have gone up the road, made a left, and thrown it all back out, along Cutler Spur, whatever, there's nothing we could do about it. So I hate to throw my hands up in the air and say, "We tried, and we couldn't do it," but there's just certain things that, that, you know, you look for it, you hope that the private, private industry will get together and come up with some solutions that help this, but I just don't think throwing more money at a lot of these things is going to fix the problem. And we talk about free enterprise and free markets, when, if there becomes a recycling market available in the future, that might go a long way to help a lot of this. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will be supporting your motion.
Commissioner Davis.
I'm done.
All right, with that, I'll have a roll call vote. Now remember, the motion in front of us is no universal collection. So the ones that vote yes is where you want to be at, so. Roll call vote.
Chairman Carnahan?
Yes.
Chair, excuse me. Commissioner Schleba?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm not happy about this, but yes.
Motion passes 5-0. With that, we are adjourned till 1 o'clock.